Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the City Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days. And any actions taken tonight on final development plans, design review, or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the third council meeting of this month, or at the first council meeting of next month if associated with a rezoning or major amendment. Any recommendations made on zoning requests, major amendments, future land use amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the Commission's consent agenda, planning staff in the Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item. Second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward to make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone, identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you that you please either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Good evening and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I call this order, I call to order this regular meeting of the City Planning Commission and will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on rezoning requests, major amendments, future land use amendments, and ordinance amendments will be referred to the City Council for a public hearing on Tuesday, September 6th at 7:00 PM in the Carnegie Town Hall. Action taken on preliminary subdivision plans will be referred to the City Council for action on Monday, August 15th unless associated with a zoning request, which then would be heard by the City Council on Tuesday, September 6th. Action taken tonight on conditional use permits is final unless appealed to the City Council. And any action taken tonight on final development plans or minor amendments is final. At this time, the Planning Commission will approve the consent and regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the Commission's consent agenda, standing planning staff in the Planning Commission applies the following criteria. First, the request conforms to the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. Fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. The consent agenda items are, number one would be approval of the July 6, 2011 meetings, minutes of the regular meeting. Two, Platts. Three would be a rezone from the RS2 Residential District to the RC Recreation Conservation District for allowed uses at East 26th Street and South Canyon Avenue. Four, rezone from the I-1 Light Industrial, the C-4 Planned Commercial, and the RA2 Residential Districts to the I-1 Light Industrial, the C-4 Planned Commercial, and the RA2 Residential Districts for allowed uses at South Grange Avenue and West Village Drive. Five, rezone from the RA1 Residential and O Office Districts to the RS2 Residential and RC Recreation Conservation Districts for allowed land uses at the northwest corner of West Benson Road and North Marion Road. Six, rezone from the RS2 Residential District and the RA1 Residential District to the RD Residential District for allowed land uses at West Madison Street and North Valley View Road. Seven, major amendment to SubArea A of the Celebrate Community Church Planned Development District to add a retail coffee shop as an accessory use to the allowed uses at 1,000 South Sycamore Avenue. Eight, conditional use permit in the C-4 Planned Commercial District to allow a parking lot expansion at West 59th Street and South Louise Avenue. Nine, a conditional use permit in the RD Residential District to construct a four-unit townhome at East 45th Street and South Outfield Avenue. Ten, a minor amendment to SubArea C, Westwood Valley Planned Development District to reduce front and rear yard minimum required setbacks from 25 feet to 20 feet at West 32nd Street and South Norma Trail. Eleven, preliminary subdivision plan for the Williams Edition in the I-1 Light Industrial District, the C-4 Planned Commercial District, and the RA2 Residential District for a multi-use development at South Grange and West Village Drive. Staff, would there be any additions or subtract?
Yeah, staff would request that we move items seven and 10 to the regular agenda for public concern.
Number seven and number 10 to the regular agenda? Are there any objections from the audience to any item listed on the consent agenda? Are there any objections from the Planning Commission members to any items listed on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for acceptance of the consent and regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the consent agenda, moving items seven and 10 to the regular agenda.
Would there be a second?
Okay.
Got a motion and second, all in favor will signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes. I would ask all the Commission members, I have been advised that they've been having a little audio problems with the system, so if and when you care to speak, they've requested that we get close to the microphone. With seven and 10, we would go with seven and 10. I will chair seven, I will stand down for item number 10. Meredith Larson will take my position for number 10. And I'll then come back for 12. Let's start with number seven.
Need to approve the regular agenda.
Number seven is a major amendment to SubArea A of the Celebrate Community Church Planned Development District to add a retail coffee shop as an accessory use to the allowed uses of 1,000 South Sycamore Avenue. Oh, I've just been informed we also need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Staff has one comment on the regular agenda. We received a request to defer item number 12 to the September Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the regular agenda with items seven and 10 added and item 12 deferred.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor will signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes.
You already read it in, so I will just go ahead. My name is Dave Loveland and I'll be representing planning staff on this and later items on tonight's meeting. Item number seven is petition number 2011-0713. The request is for a major amendment to SubArea A of the Celebrate Community Church Planned Development District in order to add retail, trade, and service as an accessory use to the permitted land uses. The applicant's requesting this in order to open a coffee shop within the church that would be open to the general public during business hours. This coffee shop would also entail a drive-through, which is what's triggering the change. The area of the site in question is 7.8 acres and it's located at 1,000 South Sycamore Avenue. As far as the abutting zoning and land uses to the north, southeast, and west is generally residential and all of those have been assigned compatibility ratings of four, which means that they are generally compatible with potential minor incompatibilities. Just to give you a quick history, the Celebrate Community Church Planned Development District was created by a City Council action in May of 2004 in order to allow a church and accessory uses. Approval for the building expansion was also completed in July of 2009. And this building, if you remember, was formerly the site of Sioux Falls Christian High School. The proposed regulations have been noted inside your staff reports. The major change to that is that we would be adding under uses permitted item G, which is retail, trade, and service as an accessory use. And so that's written that way in order to ensure that any retail would be secondary to the main purpose of the church. As I noted, the location is at 1,000 South Sycamore. And as far as public agencies and infrastructure comments from traffic engineering, no changes to access points on Sycamore will be approved for this use. So they just wanted to let them know that there would be no access changes on Sycamore Avenue. The proposed coffee shop will be located in the interior of the existing church structure and while open to the general public will not produce much of any additional impact to surrounding properties. And so because of that, we are, because the subject application should not negatively impact surrounding properties and any additional changes would require public hearings before the Planning Commission and City Council, we are recommending approval of the major amendment with the subarea regulations as noted in your staff reports. We did receive one letter from a concerned neighbor, primarily his concerns, I'm not sure if he's in the audience or not, his concerns were along the matters of traffic impacts and then snowplowing, and then he was also concerned with the expansion of a potentially commercial use. And that concludes staff report. You can take any questions.
Would there be any questions of staff?
Dave, would this major amendment allow, I know they're asking to put a, basically a, we don't have a plan of what it's going to look like or anything like that, to put a coffee shop onto this. Would it allow for other additional retail trade to be built on this site because it is so large?
Yes, as an accessory use it would be, but, so they wouldn't, it wouldn't be a separate building, it would be accessory to the church. So something like a bookstore or things like that, a lot of times when you see, you know, a larger church campus, that's kind of those uses that you'd be looking at, so.
Okay.
And I'll just note again that a coffee shop, what's triggering this one is that it's a drive-through window. If it were just a coffee shop located in the interior of the church, it would, it would be allowed as it stands since it's just an accessory use. You see those in many of the churches around the community already, so.
Can you tell us where the drive-through would be?
I'd have to defer to the applicant on that one, I didn't see a plan for that, so.
Any other questions of staff at this time? Thank you, David, you may sit down.
Thank you.
Before I ask the petitioner to come up, I should say, if your item was on the consent agenda, other than items seven and 10, those have been approved and those that were here for that, those particular ones are free to leave at this time, but I forgot to say that. Is the petitioner here on number seven?
Hello, my name's Brent Norgard, I live here in Sioux Falls, I'm on staff at Celebrate and created the petition here to add a coffee shop. We actually have a coffee shop in the church right now, we've had a coffee shop there since about 2005, and it's just used internally right now on the weekends and our Wednesday night, Wednesday night services. What we want to do is expand that so we can have our, primarily our congregation come and use that throughout the week. And so we just, we're going to expand the hours and some of the equipment inside of that to just allow some heavier use of that. But we're going to open that up for a coffee and yes, we want to have a drive-through for people just to catch that on the way, on the way to work or something. And the drive-through actually will be on the west side of the property. If you can see, I don't have a pointer here or anything, but on the, there is a circle drive off of Sycamore right there, it's circling, and the drive-through will be in that area. The letter that we did receive was from a gentleman on Suburban Drive behind, to the east of the property, and I don't see this, that drive-through affecting traffic near his area, so he's actually back to the east of the property.
Would there be any questions for Brent? If there be, if there is no questions, you may be seated. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular matter? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion from the Commission.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Would there be a second?
Second.
This would then be our time for discussion in regards to this matter.
I guess I have some concerns about the precedence that we're setting for any other churches in the, in the city to do this, and as far as traffic backing up onto Sycamore, if there is a line to get their coffee, could that become an issue? So, that would be my concern.
Does anyone else have any concerns? Seeing none, I would, I would ask for a vote, all in favor of item number seven? Will signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed?
Yes.
Motion passes. I will now go to item number 10. Meredith, you take my spot.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is Steve Randall, I'll be representing planning staff and other, on this item and others this evening. This applicant, or the application, item number 10 on the agenda tonight. Petition number 2011-0708 is a request for a minor amendment to SubArea in Westwood Valley Planned Development District, it's a seven and a half acre site. The purpose is to reduce front and rear yard setbacks from what is currently required, and the current land use is vacant. All of this property, surrounding the subject property, is in a Westwood Valley Planned Development District, and as such, we've given it a compatibility rating of five because the plan has been approved through Planning Commission and the City Council and final development plans approved for the subject property. That is to say, the proposed use with the exhibit that's provided in your information packet is identical to pre-existing zoning districts and uses that were previously approved. Westwood Valley was zoned planned development in December 2003 to allow development of residential, office, institutional, commercial, and recreational uses. Since then, there have been five final development plans approved in this, this planned development district, including multifamily uses as RA1 on the subject property. This final development plan for lots three to 15 and 18 and 19 Block 9 Westwood Valley Edition was for the purpose of constructing multifamily residential buildings, and it was approved with stipulations on September 3rd, 2009. The one stipulation restricted the use of ash trees for required tree planting. The standards we're looking at is RA1 Residential District for setbacks, density, and so on, located on the west side of West Norma Trail, on the east of side of the west side transportation corridor and south of West 26th Street. Since the final development plan was approved with landscaping, buffers, and so on against the parkway, the parkway has been reduced in scale to a collector's street. At one time, it was more of a highway classification, four lanes with a median. Now it has been reduced to a collector and allowed accessibility to adjacent lots. So, direct access from Norma Trail on the east side and direct access from the parkway on the west side is allowed. Access points are allowed, but shall be considered again on the final development plan, they will have to come back for final development plan approval on this, we're just looking at the setback requirements. There is a future school and park site planned west of the parkway, but it hasn't been located Proposed development lots are not dimensioned on the plan, but front and rear yard minimum setbacks of 20 feet are indicated. Parking is double car garages attached for residential use, four units attached. Building location and design indicate center location on each lot facing the street. A landscaping plan is not indicated and will be treated with the final development plan application when it comes in. 20 feet is an adequate front yard setback in a planned development on a collector's street, however, required parking is not allowed in the required front yard setback. Staff notes that the proposed location and number of driveways under the parkway will prevent on-street parking. The applicant previously proposed to replat the subject property for the development of lots with fourplexes and two lots with three fourplex buildings on each lot, for a total of 20 units at a density of 2.7 units per acre. You see on the exhibit in front of you, the plan approved in 2009 showing multiple buildings on one lot and then separate buildings on separate lots, for a total of 20 units. The proposed development now is actually, has less density along the interior of the, of the layout than it does on the previous approved plan, so traffic impacts actually should be less, but the density has increased because accessibility has increased. And we've increased from 20 to 32 units at a density of 4.3 units per acre. Because the subject application requires a final development plan application to the Planning Commission for review of site development plan and building design, and 20 feet is an adequate setback for townhomes on a parkway, staff recommends approval of the minor amendment. Staff has had a couple calls on this concerned about density and traffic in the neighborhood, and therefore it's on the regular agenda tonight. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve, any questions for Steve? Okay, thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here this evening?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Damian Grebel, I'm with Earhart Griffin &amp; Associates, 300 North Dakota Avenue, Suite 114, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57104, and I'm representing the petitioner here tonight. As Mr. Randall stated in staff report, and I'd just like to state again, this portion of property was established as a PD zone in 2003, and within that planned development district, there's a subarea that allowed this type of development. In 2003, that zone would have been established through Planning Commission, City Council, and is part of public record. Again, as development took place in the subdivision in 2009, there was another public hearing on this zone which established not only the use, but the layout of the property. So, in 2009, what came before Planning Commission again was a layout for a final development plan. The final development plan, if you can see that, ICA on the west side, at that time, the west side corridor, there was a berm planned, there were trees planned buffering the west side corridor, there were also trees shown along West Norma Trail. So this is a final development plan that was brought before Planning Commission that showed the use of the property that had already been established per zoning. This was in 2009, made public record at that time as well. There was also a separate, separate final development plan at the intersection of 32nd and Norma for the same basic use, multifamily uses as well, that would have been brought before Planning Commission, part of public record. Again, that brings us here today. As Mr. Randall stated, there's been some changes on the city's traffic west side corridor. That corridor is no longer going on the west side of this property, so the anticipated right-of-way that was needed on the west side, the amount is reduced. So, that being said, it allows this area of property to be developed with our, what we're asking for is our change in front and rear setbacks. As Mr. Randall said, the density of the property, the density onto Norma Trail should be less dense, the traffic, since we will have both access on Norma Trail and to the west side of this property. This area is 7.1 acres and using the minimum density of the RA1 zone would allow for a 121 units to be developed, and as you can see, we're nowhere close to that, so we're well below the proposed, the allowed density on this property. City staff has already stated that the compatibility rating for this project, for this request is a five, which means it's the most compatible for the surrounding uses. And in that, that kind of concludes what I have to say, and I would be more than happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Damian, any questions for Damian? I guess not. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to address item number
Evening, my name is Doug Bleeker, I live on West Norma Trail. We bought it in the end of October of 2009. We are led to believe it was a residential neighborhood, quiet. I actually have a print of nothing like that, that was given out, and this is how 12 homes are going to be built on the west side of the road. There already have been a condo built on the west side. I have a question to that. Is that condominium currently to standard? Is that with the five, five-foot setback already involved?
Well, we're not here tonight to deal with something that's already happened, we really have to focus on this particular request this evening, so.
I was told it was built to current city standards.
I assume so because that, I don't believe we've had anything related to changing the setbacks prior to this, for this particular development.
You increase the density of home in that area, traffic will increase. If you take 12 homes, and you can even go with condos, I've got nothing against them. If you put 16 condominiums in there, times four families, you can figure out the car traffic. car traffic. You put thirty-two in there coming off West Norma Trail, you're talking about one-hundred-and-twenty-eight cars just for the people that live there, not for their guests, not for their family. So, to tell me there's less traffic congestion, that ain't gonna fly. Now, as far as this snow removal, huge issue. You reduce the frontage, you, those condominiums take up more, again, more driveway space, and in between each condominium, there's what, nine feet allowed, ten feet? So, now you got twenty feet between the two for, and that's actually where the mailboxes go. Where does the snow from the street go? Is the city gonna take on added increase in cost to come out and haul this snow out in trucks? We live on the very edge of town. We live there, we moved there, knew it, it was gonna blow in heavy snow. We've got hit hard the last two years. That snow's been, the last two years, pushed onto that vacant lot. Where, what's the city gonna do with it? The water drainage also, when they built that condominium last fall, plugged a natural resource. It now flows out onto the street north of that current condominium on the west side, and it floods everything down on Thirty-second Street and the end of Norma Trail. So, there are a lot of concerns. A lot of the neighborhood just found out about this last Thursday night. The voice of concern is immense. A lot of them couldn't make it tonight, do the short notice.
Are you here to oppose the development of these?
I'm appo, I'm here to oppose them moving the limit, moving those houses forward. This is a residential neighborhood. What they're trying to do is put in a complex that I've seen in Sioux Falls. This, moving those houses forward reduces the parking on that street. There is no place to park hardly now, even on my side, these side. I think if they're gonna build the condominiums, they need to have additional parking put in, come up with a snow plan removal, just from the street itself, not even from the driveways, and adhere to that flooding issue. Because it does go down there, and it floods Thirty-second, not six, eight inches. I'm talking a foot to foot and a half.
Yeah, and just, just so you know, that the planning commission does not deal with snow removal or drainage, just land use issues.
The land use issue, if approved, does bring into issues that the later the city is gonna have to face.
And, and once this plan, if approved, is submitted for permitting, as I understand it, that's when the engineers look at snow removal and water and things like that. The only issue here tonight is, we have, as I understand it, a development that's approved for this type of development. Can they reduce the setback on the front and back from twenty-five to twenty?
It reduces the cost of our homes, because you put more homes in there, it looks cluttered. I don't know if any of you want that. It makes a cluttered effect. The current condominium looks pretty nice, if that's at the current setback. But there's been question about that since it's been built. And if not, or if it is, then all those current condominiums would jot out in front of it. And again, parking, again, needs to be an issue, as to that front access, can a car park on that driveway and not block the sidewalk?
I believe they can.
The current condominium sitting there hardly allows it. So, I mean, that's just something you need to look at or hear.
You know, they have to follow all of the other ordinances when they build these townhomes. The only difference would be the distance from the property line to the front face or the back face of the unit.
Well, not all ordinances were followed, because I called City Hall when they started digging, and I said, "I think they're a little close." Mr. Hartman really offended me when he called me back, and he says, "Are you sure you know what you're talking about?" I said, I told Brad, I said, "I've seen trenches before, I know what a back hole looks like." He said, "There are no building permits been issued for that." We did put a stop to it, but nobody has ever come out and said that it's been, Mr. Hartman did come back and says, "I did check, a surveyor did the job." Well, when I parked my car in the driveway on the other side, there is ample room, more than to go in front and back. When I see the cars parked at the current condominium, it's tight. So, yeah, I oppose the, and if they need more land, that fence on the backside, that's a cornfield. He can go by it ten or fifteen feet from that farmer and move it back, if he needs additional land.
Okay. Before you step away, any questions for Doug? Okay, guess not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else tonight that wishes to address item number ten?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for planning. Based, what I was reading here, and from what you said, is required parking is not allowed in the front yard setback?
That's correct.
And there's no parking, and this will prevent on-street parking, so there will be no on-street parking either?
It'd be tight. Like you said, there's twenty feet possibly between driveways, but that's where you put the mailboxes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other questions for planning staff? Okay, thank you, Steve. I don't think it's necessary, Damian, unless somebody has a question for the petitioner. Okay. Hearing, we have no more questions. I'd entertain a motion for approval of the item.
Mr. Chair, I recommend approval of item number ten.
Okay, we have a motion.
Matters of discussion.
A motion for approval, is there a second?
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I guess I feel that there is a legitimate concern raised by the neighbor for parking, and if there's no street parking for twin homes or whatever these units are, condos, that could be a problem down the road.
Any other discussion?
I'm just, excuse me, I'm just curious about one thing that the opponent had commented that he, they had just found out about this a week ago. Did I hear that correctly?
We found out last Thursday.
And how long has this been brewing? I mean, it's been in the works for more than just a week, I'm sure.
We can have Steve come up, but I, I would guess that this followed the new guidelines for notification?
They, signs were posted ten days ahead of time, so if they didn't see the signs, letters of notification were sent out to property owners within three hundred feet.
Was in what?
Three hundred feet.
And how long ago?
That would have been two weeks ago. Oh, I'm sorry. Letters of notification are sent out on rezonings and major amendments, not minor amendments. So, it was the posting of signs that would have been ten days ahead of time.
So, there was no other?
No other requirement, yeah.
Any other questions for Steve? Any other discussion? Then I would call a question. All those in favor of approving the minor amendment, item number ten, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Let's, let's do a show of hands. All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Okay, we have three, four, and two against. All those, all those opposed raise their hand. Okay. Three to two, item number ten is approved.
Number twelve has been deferred. We'll go to number thirteen. Conditional use permit in the C-two general commercial district to allow hotel on a non-artorial street at twenty-seven twenty-five South Carolyn Avenue. David?
Good evening again. The petitioner is Wendell Portrats, and the owner is Thomas Family Trust. They've applied for a conditional use permit in order to construct an eighty-unit, four-story hotel as, at twenty-seven twenty-five South Carolyn Avenue. The area in size is one-point-five-four acres. The zoning is C-two, and the compatibility ratings are five. It's surrounded by C-two zoning and other commercial uses, except to the west, which is Interstate two-twenty-nine right-of-way, and so, planning staff has ranked this as about as compatible as it can be with surrounding land uses. The conditional use permit standard for hotel motel is just that they be located in areas where the traffic they generate can be adequately channeled. Design of these sites should try to minimize the impact of the parking area and solicited by the use. As, the standard for that is because occasionally you'll sign, you'll see collector streets that do not, that have some residential on them, that there may be traffic concerns. This, in this case, it doesn't exist. This is entirely a commercial corridor, and planning staff does not have any concerns about traffic impacts at this location. As far as the conditional use plan, the setbacks in dimensions indicate that required setbacks have been met. The applicant has provided eighty-five parking stalls on site, which meets minimum standards. The landscaping plan appears to meet minimum standards as well. A specific schedule of species was not provided. However, we do advise against utilizing ash trees for minimum requirements. The signage plan was not provided, but the applicant is aware that they need to, that sign permits are issued separately, and they should conform to the, and they must conform to the requirements of the sign ordinance for the C-two zone. A complete photometric plan will be required at the time of building permit review, and trash and maintenance facilities are located in the northwest corner of the site. Those enclosures should be screened from interstate right-of-way utilizing fencing and landscaping. As far as public agencies and infrastructure comments, Traffic Engineering, their statement is that the applicant should be advised that Carolyn Avenue will become a right-in, right-out only at its juncture with West Forty-first Street in the future, and the applicant should be contacting Traffic Engineering for further details. They do have plenty of opportunity to access the major arterials at Louise and Twenty-Sixth Street and some of those others as well. From the drainage engineers, the onsite detention of stormwater runoff will be required. Plans for that have not yet been approved by City Engineering. As far as planning staff analysis, the applicant's requesting to construct an eighty-unit, four-story hotel at this location. At fifty-nine and a half feet tall, the structure exceeds the maximum height regulations for the zoning district, but the Board of Adjustment granted a variance for the structure on July nineteenth of two thousand and eleven. The applicant is also aware that this site is within the special flood hazard area shown us on the D-Firm maps. A floodplain development permit is required, and the applicant is working with city staff to ensure compliance for the issuance of that permit. The site will have fill added to raise the structure up about, up out of the flood hazard area, and this documentation has not yet been supplied, but they are working on it. And specific building materials and colors were not provided. The submitted rendering shows several colors and materials being used to enhance the overall features of the hotel. The applicant should be prepared to address the colors and materials, if that's an item of concern, to the commissioners at the public hearing. And the collector and arterial street system allows for adequate traffic flow through the non-residential development into this location. But because the applicant's provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, and requires a complete plan check by zoning and building services prior to obtaining a building permit, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with two conditions. The first is that the floodplain development application and supporting documentation submitted prior to the building permit, and that, and number two is that supplemental material showing the screening and landscaping of the trash mechanical enclosures is required as part of the building permit review. And that can, well, and just to let you know, we did receive one letter of concern from adjacent property developers about drainage, but drainage will be handled as far as onsite detention, and then those plans will have to be reviewed before the building permits issued anyway. And that concludes staff report.
Would there be any questions?
David? Just one question. Is there any concern about sound on, in that particular location?
Not at this location, no. No, we haven't run into anything that would, that would cause the hotel to, to be concerned, or surrounding property owners, I guess, to be concerned.
David, in the concern about drainage, are you saying that as they go through the process here, one of the things they'll have to provide would be an engineer's drainage?
Yep, to city staff, yep, to the Public Works Department for review, yep, and approval. So, their drainage plan will have to be approved for onsite detention of stormwater flows.
Okay, thank you, David. Any other questions, David? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the petitioner be here?
Good evening. My name is Wendell Portrats, four oh five South Third Avenue. I represent the owner developer TKO out of Aberdeen, South Dakota. I heard some of the concerns here this evening, Ken, and everybody. Right now, this, this project has kind of moved along quite rapidly. We actually put the land under contract approximately about a month ago. We already have the engineering drawings completed. To answer your question, Ken, the drainage issues and containment issues will be submitted to the city this week. So, we have addressed the drainage problems. We've also addressed the floodplain. It is true that we are raising the site out of the floodplain to conform, this is in, is actually preferred by the owner, the new owner. We also have, the franchise itself is a Candlewood Suites, which is actually a Holiday Inn product. It's just one arm of their franchise. The standard colors or the color boards have been, are in the process right now. I virtually have just started, I got the schematic design done, went through the height variance and things of that nature, received that. It's just moving along quite rapidly, because we hope to get in the ground yet this month to beat the winter construction. So, I have, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Would anyone have any questions for Wendell? Seeing none, thank you, Wendell.
Yep.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address item number thirteen?
Todd Memser, representing the owners at twenty-eight oh one South Carolyn. Just, I guess the questions I would have would be for a unit of that size, and I heard him say something about eighty-five parking spots, just wondering, is that average of what's needed for a unit of that many places for onsite parking? And then do you hear them talk about raising the level of the lot, you know, wondering how that's addressed, not only just to the drainage of the property, but how that's going to affect the water moving to the adjacent properties around there of, you know, if there is a major rain, how that's, if that's going? I would think that's going to raise the water level for the places around there, and just wondering how that's addressed.
Thank you. Would anyone have any questions to Todd? Seeing none. David, who is presenting this one? You, David? His question in regards to eighty-five parking spots?
The standard for hotels is that they provide one parking stall per you, per room, and then five additional stalls for staff, and so they've, they've met that minimum requirement.
So, they meet the standard as far as parking?
Yep.
Is there other concern about drainage? Is that something we should?
It's not necessarily a purview of the planning commission. The city engineers are going to require a standard for drainage that detains all stormwater, and so that there would be no more flow off of the site as there was pre-development. And that's the standard that they are gonna have to comply with and be approved. However, that's affected by what they plan to do to raise themselves up out of the floodplain is gonna be their concern as they try and address those, that engineering standard, but that's not going to be waived, so.
So, in other words, if this is approved, someone else is looking over this to help alleviate some of Todd's concerns?
Yep, it will be a major consideration as far as their grading and their building permits are concerned. So, they need to get that approved before they'll be able to move.
Question, then, then that's for construction as well as for the permanent site there, right?
That's correct. Yep.
Any other questions for David? Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Todd, did you? Todd, did you have something else you needed to say? Come on up to the mic.
Not necessarily concerned, just wondering if, what commission would, you know, if everything's approved, when it comes to approving the water stuff, which, which unit or addresses that for future, not, you know, for analysis?
It's not necessarily a public body that approves those plans, not something akin to the Planning Commission, there isn't one, there isn't one like that. But the public engineers and the, and the Public Works Department are certainly willing to take any concerns over the phone or in person or by email. So, that's.
David, would you be willing to give Todd's?
Yep.
Name and, and phone number?
I can certainly give him the information too of, of our city engineer who handles that.
And so, if he had questions in regards to that, the engineering department?
Yep.
With Wendell's help could answer those?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Wendell, I saw your hand go up. Come on up for a minute.
I guess I would also offer to any, but, any concerns, I have actually seen the drainage plan. I actually did the final review on it today before I went to the city. All the water is contained in chambers underground in the parking lot area. The entire perimeter of the parking lot is collected by a storm drainage system, which is going into Carolyn Avenue. It's all piped to Carolyn Avenue. The roof drainage, which it is a flat roof, is also piped into the stormwater containment areas. And this is being designed by Seren Associates. So, just to assure you, that's what we're going to be submitting yet this week for their first review.
Thank you, Wendell. Well, any other questions for Wendell, guys? Thank you, Wendell. Was there anyone else in the audience that wanted to address this issue? If not, I'd look for commission action on item number thirteen.
I'll move for approval of item thirteen with the two conditions that have been recommended by staff, and those are that the floodplain development application and supporting documentation be submitted prior to getting building permits, and that the supplemental materials show the screening and landscaping of the trash mechanical enclosures as part of the building permit review.
Have a motion. Would anyone care to second that?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor will signify by saying yes.
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 All opposed? Motion number thirteen passes. Now, move to number fourteen. Fourteen is a conditional use permit in the O Office District to construct a daycare center at West Ninetieth Street and South Louise Avenue. Steve?
Now, the applicant is Chad Van Busker at Van Busker Construction. Property is also, owner is also Kingswood Development Corporation. They're requesting approval of a daycare center use on the subject property's owned O Office, requiring a conditional use. It's about a five-acre site. And it's located at the northwest corner of the intersection at West Ninetieth Street and South Louise Avenue. Currently, the site is vacant. There is residential development occurring to the east of the property. The Shakesu Falls designation is Neighborhood Employment Center at West Eighty-Fifth Street and South Louise Avenue, so there'll be similar land uses at this location, at and around this location. As far as zoning goes, to the north, it's Ag still in the county. And to the south, it's RD Residential, residential uses. To the east, RD Residential. And to the west, Platinum Valley PD, which is going to develop office and commercial similar uses. However, because of the proximity to the residential uses, we're giving it a compatibility rating of four, minor conflict potential that can be addressed through setbacks, landscaping, and design. A daycare center under the zoning ordinance requires consideration of a safe and healthy environment for the person, being primarily important. Applicants shall remit their authorization from the City Health Department prior to conditional use permit approval. Snicklefritz's daycare is identified as the occupant of the building, and the plan has been developed for them indicating a floor plan, a site plan, parking, landscaping, and outdoor play areas. Safe and convenient drop-off is indicated at the front door with parking sidewalk going to the parking spaces in front. Property is served by a driveway that comes from the south and is not being planted. It's going to be a lease area of the total site, so it's only a portion of the total site that we're looking at as far as the site plan development goes. The rest of the site is expected to develop with other buildings in the future, using the same point of access. There'd be sharing driveway, possibility of sharing parking, and other situations that we have seen as a planning commission in the past, most recently at Eighty-Fifth and Western for a similar daycare situation. The developer appears to have taken this as an approach to including multiple uses on a singular site. Staff has pointed out to them a situation where they will have to be concerned about signage. Limited signage for one site in an office district is quite limited, but they are aware of that. Emergency services would like to have an addressing plan put together for multiple buildings on one site so they can find a building quickly as they enter into the property. Setbacks are indicated for this two-hundred-and-thirty-six-foot by one-hundred-and-sixty-foot site, including a twenty-five-foot front yard setback on West Ninetieth and a sixteen-foot side yard setback along the west, east side of the property. Ten foot is required. Building fronts to the west, and so that's where the main entrance and activity would be away from the residential side. Also, the traffic is indicated that direction. Staff noted that the parking lot to the north side, which has the end facing the residential side, will require screening. So, they'll have to add screening there. There's not enough room really to put landscape screening in there, so staff is recommending a screen fence. The applicant proposes to serve this and future building sites on the subject property with future development plans that won't necessarily come back to you for review, but the consideration that we're giving to this one will probably set a precedent for a development of the rest of the site. Drainage is a concern in this area, and the applicant will have to continue to work with city engineer to ensure proper drainage design at this location. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed and requires a complete plan check by building and zoning services, prior to obtaining a building permit, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with two, or, excuse me, four conditions. The first one, that treated as one lot for multiple building sites, the subject property requires seven trees to be planted in the front yard along West Ninetieth Street and thirteen trees in the front yard along South Louise Avenue. Secondly, treated as one lot for multiple building sites, the subject property is allowed two freestanding signs, one on each street frontage, each sign being no more than forty-eight square feet in size and six feet in height. Three, treated as one lot, a signage plan for addressing must be approached, or approved by emergency service providers prior to building occupancy. And lastly, provide a five-foot-high wood screen fence at the east end of the north parking lot. That concludes staff report. We've had no calls on this.
Thank you, Steve. There be any questions, Steve? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here?
Hello, Steve Van Busker, five-eight-hundred South Remington Place, Sioux Falls. Here, I'm the applicant. Maybe answer questions, I guess. We had a neighborhood meeting. We had one person show up. We just needed, you know, they just had a couple landscaping questions and just questions about the project in general, so, no particular concerns. I don't know, the next-door neighbor, Mary, she might be here tonight, I don't know. She couldn't make their initial meeting, I guess, but, I don't know if there's any questions. I guess the only one thing I didn't notice on the staff report was the wood fence, the specification of wood fence. We understand there's got to be fencing there. Might treat that more as a suggestion rather than a requirement to wood, because we might prefer to have something like PVC, which we view as standing up a lot better than a wood fence, less maintenance. So, other than that, I could take questions.
Thank you, Steve. I knew you weren't Chad, so I, would there be any questions for Steve? No questions, thank you. Would there be anyone else in the audience that would like to address number fourteen? Seeing none, I would look for commission action on item number fourteen.
Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation for approval of item fourteen with the following stipulations, but I'd like to change item number four of the stipulations to, say, to provide a five-foot-high wood or vinyl fence.
Anyone care to second that motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing no discussion, all in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Number fourteen passes. Our next item is number fifteen, which is a final development plan in subarea G of the Dolly Farm Village Plan Development District to construct a large, single-use retail building at six-oh-one South Highline Place.
Evening again. This is petition number twenty-eleven dash oh-seven dash fourteen. The applicant is requesting approval in order to construct a one-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand square foot retail building in the Dolly Farm Village Development. The location is at six-oh-one Highline Place. The area of the site is fourteen, just over fourteen and a half acres, with the existing zoning being within subarea G of the Dolly Farm PD. The Shakesu Falls designation is as a regional employment center, so this is appropriate. And abutting zoning and land uses are, are compatible as they are generally part of either the detention or additional retail areas of the Dolly Farm Village area. So, we consider the application compatible. The Dolly Farm Village PD was created by City Council Action in June of two thousand and six for multiple uses. Several minor boundary changes in the subarea have been completed since that time, as specific parameters of tenants have been proposed. Specific site development plans within subarea G and F have been approved by the Planning Commission since the district's creation, the results of which you can see out there right now. The applicable regulations and standards are noted within your staff report. The one that I did want to highlight was that a letter indicating approval to proceed under other regulations, which is number six. Signed by the chairperson of the Dolly Farm Village Architectural Review Committee must accompany any submittal to the City Planning Commission. We did receive that letter today. In your staff report later on, it notes that we hadn't received it at the drafting of the report, but we did receive that letter today. It is a conditional approval from the Dolly Farm Village Architectural Review Committee, so there is an additional stipulation that I'll be reading into the record that staff is proposing to address that conditional approval. As I noted, the location is at six-oh-one South Highline Place. Highway eleven and Arrowhead Parkway are limited access arterials, and so access will come to the site specifically from the entrance points at those major arterials and along South Highline Place. A proposal in your park will be created on the adjacent property to the west. Timelines for that completion have not yet been developed, and no schools exist within six hundred feet of the subject property. As far as the final development plan, the applicants are showing just over six-hundred-and-fifty parking stalls located onsite. And the building design and location, the building will be located in the west-center portion of the lot with the parking lot for the north and east sides. The building facade is composed of precast concrete panels and concrete masonry units with different earth tones used as a primary color scheme, and the applicant is here to be able to address any specific building materials that would be used on different facades. The specific landscape guidelines, including schedule of species, has not yet been included. They are working with a local landscape design firm to get that completed, and then that will be provided to staff for review prior to the issuance of a building permit. And a specific sign plan was not included in this packet, but would, but any signage for Sam's Club would need to conform to the master sign plan. Photometrics of the site have not been included, but will be required to meet city ordinances. Along with trash enclosures and any outdoor recycling or mechanical equipment will be required to be screened from public view utilizing fencing and landscaping. All utilities are available. The drainage plan is under review. And the only note that Traffic Engineering is that the roundabout will be required to be constructed for the traffic impact study, which is, the roundabout is down on East Eighteenth Street and South Highline Place, just south of the target. As traffic increases, there will be a trigger point at which that roundabout will need to be constructed. As far as land use and comprehensive plan analysis, the proposed site plan and building plans are largely in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan. This area is noted as a regional employment center in the future land use map, and intensive retailing isn't allowed component of that designation. In addition, the applicants have described on the site plans pedestrian pathways to ensure connectivity to other retailers and sites within the development. And they noted about the approval to proceed already, and so, I'll just get right to the recommendation. Because the subject application conforms to both the twenty-thirty-five Shakesu Falls Comprehensive Plan and the purpose and intent of the Dolly Farm Village Plan Development District, staff is recommending approval of the final development plan with the following conditions. The first is that a landscape plan to include the schedule and location of required landscaping shall be submitted to and approved by the planning director designee prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number two is the site plan and building renderings are approved as presented. Any changes to the site plan will require approval by the planning director designee. And number three, sign plans needed to, need to be submitted in coordination with the master sign plan. And then, as a result of the conditional approval from the Dolly Farm Village Architectural Review Committee, staff is proposing this fourth condition, which will take care of those, those outstanding items. And then, that would be read into the record as all outstanding architectural review items. As noted in the letter addressed on August third, twenty-eleven, from Dick Dempster, Chair of the Dolly Farm Village Architectural Review Committee, must be addressed in a new letter received by the planning office from said committee indicating items have been satisfactorily completed prior to the issuance of any building permits. I did want to note that we did receive some comments from residents in the Split Rock Height neighborhood, and that was provided to us, and they have, they're not here tonight, but they have provided to us a quick slideshow. Should be right down at the bottom there. It's not the beginning, if you could go up to the beginning, Steve. Yep. Mostly what their concerns center around is just some of the, they do believe that the overall design is a very good fit with the other current occupants of the Dolly Farm Village, and had a couple of suggestions. You can go to the next page. Suggests three additional architectural features at entrance stand-up to appearance similar to other structures. And those are the examples that they're talking about. And then, you can go to the next slide. And those are examples that Sam's Club has done in other locations, and if you could go one more. And then, their additional concern was that the north facing towards Highline Place auto service garage entrances, they suggested an alternate color of doors and substantial landscaping along Highline Place to block direct view of auto service area from Highline Place. And their master sign plan, they just want to make sure that the signage is in conformance with the already approved master sign plan, which it will need to be. I do want to make a note of, these concerns that were brought up by some of those neighbors are also concerns that were similarly shared by the Architectural Review Committee and will be addressed by that fourth condition. And so, that those concerns should be taken care of by the plans that are submitted in the future. And that concludes staff report.
David? Could you give us some history and explain to us what this Architectural Review Committee?
This, I believe, and Jeff can correct me, I guess I wasn't here right when they created it, but I'll try and get into it as much as I remember. At the creation of the Dolly Farm Village Plan Development District, the landowners of the property wanted to ensure that the development was of a higher quality. And so, to, in order to do that, per the subarea regulations that were developed, they formed an Architectural Review Committee. And so, what that committee's responsibility is, is to review all of the architecture within the development in accordance with the Dolly family's wishes and intent of what they were selling the land to do. And so, before the Planning Commission can move to approve any of the final development plans in this area, we are required to receive a letter from that Architectural Review Committee that is indicating approval to proceed. And so, and that was what was submitted to us today.
It wasn't a city requirement?
It was not.
That was something they took?
No, that was, that was an intent, that the Dolly family wanted the development, wanted to ensure the development was of a little higher standard than minimum city standards, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Would there be any other questions for David? Seeing none, thank you, David.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is the petitioner here?
Good evening, I'm Teresa Burgess with Bolton and Mink Engineering, I'm the civil engineer of record for this project. We also have Ayesha Aurora here this evening, she's the architect of record. I believe David's covered everything, so if you have any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer, but we don't have any presentations.
Would anyone have any questions for Teresa?
Just a comment, as an east side resident, I'm excited to see these things getting built over there, so welcome.
You know, we try not to put them in residential neighborhoods.
No, I, I live on the east side of Sioux Falls, and I'm excited to see the development coming that way.
Oh, you are excited to see it coming, okay. I thought you were asking if anybody ever is.
No.
She's on your side, Teresa.
I think it will fit real well with the development, and we do have the Walmart in the area, so we already have a shopping demographic that's interested in seeing one, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Would there be anyone else in the audience that would like to address item number fifteen?
Good evening, I'm Craig Lloyd, Lloyd Companies, 3130 West Fifty-seventh Street, Suite 112. We're excited to have Sam's in the area, we're excited for not only the area but Sioux Falls, it's good economic growth. The only question I have for David is, I missed something on here, sorry, but the traffic, the roundabout to be constructed per traffic impact, and that was on the completion of that Highline, not the completion of just the retail. Okay, so we just want to make sure that we're not having to put that in at this time. Just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Wait a minute, Craig. Would there be anybody here that have any questions of Craig?
I can't believe you don't.
You can sit down.
Thank you, Craig.
Any, and one else in the audience that would like to address item fifteen? If not, I would look for commission action on item number fifteen.
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion for approval of the final development plan, item fifteen, with the four stipulations.
We have a first, a motion and a second discussion. Is it just me, or was David requesting an additional stipulation?
That was the fourth one.
That was the fourth one?
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm just excited too about this opportunity to continue the growth and development of east side, because I think it'll not only help those residents out there for convenience, but it'll somewhat take away some of the traffic congestion that we have going out to the other side. I think it might help balance that quite a bit.
I agree. Any other discussion? All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Number fifteen passes. Number sixteen is a minor amendment to subarea A of Brooks Crossing Plan Development District to increase density to one per two thousand four hundred and seventy-five square feet and remove provisions A and D from other regulations of the Plan Development District Regulations at East Fifty-fourth Street and South Sycamore Avenue. David?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is proposing the amendment to the subarea regulations in order to begin planning construction of a twelve-building, two-hundred-and-fifty-three-unit apartment complex. The site overall is about sixteen acres in size, and we do have abutting zoning and land uses. To the north is RS Two Residential, which is developing single-family, which we've assigned a rating of three. To the south is C Four and Subarea B, which is vacant, and potentially commercial areas in the C Four, and then apartments and townhomes. To the east is the RD Residential, which is vacant, and to the west is the C Four Plan Commercial, which is vacant. All of those were given compatibility ratings of four. The Brooks Crossing Plan Development District was created by City Council Action in February 2008 to allow commercial, office, and multifamily residential land uses. Final development plans were approved by the Planning Commission in August 2008 and January 2009 to construct apartments in a townhome community, and those have been largely completed out there if you go out to the site. The applicable regulations and standards that are noted in your staff report with a couple of changes that were underlined, and these are the changes that they're requesting. All used under density, area, yard, and height regulations, that density is going to change to one unit allowed per two thousand four hundred and seventy-five square feet of area, and then the, the other changes were that under other regulations, which is item six, is that item A residential structures will contain no more than four dwelling units, and item D, a minimum of two enclosed parking spaces will be provided per dwelling unit, also be struck. So, getting into the site description, the existing corridor development pattern, South Sycamore is a limited access arterial, East Fifty-fourth Street is a minor collector, and then, which would link to both South Sycamore Avenue as the arterial, and then a major collector in, in South Dubuque Avenue, and after eventual development takes place. Public agencies and infrastructure comments, traffic engineering has indicated that a deceleration lane may be required on Sycamore Avenue, and they need to contact engineering to do some traffic studies. Both water and sanitary sewer are available, and as far as the drainage goes, that is also going to be reviewed by city engineering at the standard that's, that we've already discussed tonight. Initial plans by the applicant indicate that the, that the proposed complex will consist of twelve buildings with a total of two-hundred-and-fifty-three units. Parking and density calculations are less than a five percent difference from what the original regulations required, as shown in the chart below. As far as the density, it's a one percent difference from what the minimum requirement was, and as far as parking, it's a two percent difference, and those are well within the parameters of being able to grant a minor amendment. The most significant request is to remove the requirement in the other regulations portion of the subarea regulations to limit buildings to no more than four dwelling units. That provision was initially created by the applicant in conjunction with the developers of the single-family residential to the north. The current applicant has discussed this proposal with the development company of the property to the north, and has told that staff has received a favorable response. Staff notes that the buffer to the north is indicated on the concept plan submitted for this application, and final details of that buffer will be presented at the time of the final development plan submitted to the Planning Commission. And the recommendation is because the subject application conforms to the Shakesu Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan, and will require final development plans to be approved prior to obtaining a building permit, staff is recommending approval of that minor amendment. And we are aware that the applicant has discussed the plans with the property owner to the north, which is Haran Lemmy, and they are working out some details, but in general, the, the property owner is, is willing to go along with the plans as currently presented. And that concludes staff report. We've received no other calls on this item.
David, thank you. Would there be any questions for David? Seeing none, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner here?
Good evening, Lanny Orger with Innovative Design, 3800 West Technology Circle. In regards to the minor amendment to the, for this development, we did, we acknowledged that there was potentially concern with the neighbors to the north, so we did hand-deliver invitations for a neighborhood meeting, held the neighborhood meeting, had several follow-up conversations with some of the neighbors, et cetera, and at this time, are not aware of anybody that has any oppositions to the minor amendments for the project. There's new owners for the property, times have changed from the way it was originally zoned, and so that's the, the reason for asking for the minor amendment, so that we can get into a position where it's ready to start some development.
Would anyone have any questions for, was it Lanny?
Lanny.
Lanny. Any questions for Lanny? You're in good shape, Lanny, thank you. Is there anyone else here in the audience that wishes to address item number sixteen? If not, I would look for commission action on item sixteen.
I'll move for approval.
I have a motion for approval, which, is there a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, would there be any further discussion? All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Number sixteen passes. There being no further business on the agenda, on the agenda, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chair, make a, make a recommendation for adjournment.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes.